Is that all you said?
Okay, we're live. Relax. May I have a motion to reconvene into public session?
So move.
Second.
Move by Belinda Monroe, second by Dr. Emily Moore. May I have a vote?
Aye.
Motion carried. At this time, we'll now have a redetermination forum. I'd like to welcome everyone to our February seventh, twenty twenty three meeting. Happy Black History Month. And we will now have a redetermination of forum. This is Rose Gashia, President, present. This is Belinda Monroe, First Vice President.
Present.
Mrs. Susan Gooding, Second Vice President, not present. Mrs. Sharlene Crouch, Trustee, not present. Dr. Emily Moore, Trustee.
Present.
Forum has been established. The time is now seven thirty eight P M. Also in attendance, we have Noreen Green, District Clerk.
Present.
Our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Deborah L. Wertham.
Present.
Executive Cabinet, Ms. Michelle Van Aiken, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services, pre-K through twelve.
Present.
Ms. Natasha McDay, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, pre-K through twelve. Dr. Eric Nesselwitz, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Professional Development.
Present.
Mr. Gary Gentles, Assistant Superintendent of Business.
Present.
And Ms. Arlie's Carson, Assistant Superintendent of Coto. Thank you. Please stand for such only.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now have our national. Want to thank the Roosevelt School Forest, the Department of Strategic. For their wonderful rendition of our national. At this time, we will move to our comments on the public one. Action items only. Are there any comments from the public?
I did not receive any comments.
The action items.
I'm filling my mind out.
Except for the action items on the agenda, or are they just a comment in general?
Action.
Okay, you have action items.
I do.
You wanted.
Oh, okay. Um, yes, I think.
And you can pull out the card afterwards, so we can keep them right there.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Let's get you. Um, I, I think it's a seven Schedule A, so far staff leave requests.
Seven? Two, seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Action discussion.
What is it? I'm sorry, what is it? Because I think the numbers may have changed.
Oh, okay. One year is I consent agenda, and it's a subject.
Or the consent agenda.
Mm-hmm. Seven Schedule A certified staff leave request.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I have a problem with this one, and it's something that has, uh, we've been discussing um, in the community. People have been complaining about this. Okay, so I'm trying to find a figure how this works out. Uh, you really can't be in two unions. And um, when you request a leave here, then I mean, she's going to be in one union going to another union. And that's, that's not the way it's supposed to be. She should have already had her leave a year ago if she was going to move into this position. And then on top of that, you know, when you guys start moving people from, from union to union, you're supposed to leave one union, and then you're hired in another. You can't be in two rooms at the same time. I know unions have to kind of work that out amongst themselves, but I think there's a lax there because we continue to do things that's just not right. And as a board, you should understand that, you know, employees are not supposed to be in two groups. And that was the first one. And the other one is, um, I guess I can do um, Julian, because I didn't see the other one here that I was looking for. Someone brought it up, but I guess.
Well, if you notice, it's a personnel matter. I just want to give you.
Yeah, and I understand that. That's why I didn't say names or anything like that. I understand that, but I just know that that issue is something that, um, they're doing a community meeting next week, and I think that's one of the things that's definitely going to be on, on the plate about these two unions and how, how the, the district is allowing, um, you know, jobs for people to actually um, get hired in positions, but you're not posting them, making it available to everyone.
I don't think that that's happening, no.
Yeah, it was two positions that, um, uh, you know, I know it's personnel, but there were a couple of positions that, um, you guys have not opened up, or maybe you're going to open up.
How, how do you know that it's not being posted though?
Well, I haven't seen it again. I've seen people being.
When you go to look for it, when you say that.
Well, you know, you have the, um, the.
Online.
Yeah, that we can look and see what's being posted, but also, if I see a person being hired for a job, then I should see that posted. So some of these jobs that you guys are hiring people for, they're not being posted. And, and no reason why, I know that for a fact of it. Keep in mind, people always call me with, with questions before I even say anything to you all. I make sure that I get the right information, because I don't want to seem like I'm just being, you know, over boss of the devil every right thing, but there are some things that you, it needs to be investigated, so that when people come to you, you will look like you're, you're doing your job and you're open.
Of course.
So when we have jobs in this community, anything, it should always be posted.
Absolutely.
And you should have, um, the idea of always looking like you're transparent. You might have somebody already in his, in mind that you want, but you need to always appear that you are opening up to everyone. And at this point, there are some positions that people are complaining about, and when we get to the, um, public session, I'll, I'll say some things, but I don't want to say names, because I know that that always becomes an issue. Okay, so I won't do that.
Good.
But I, I am equipped enough to be able to say what it is without saying the name.
Okay.
And I'm hopeful that, you know, going forward, as a board, you start to look at some of these, you know, I look at all of you. You guys live here just like that.
Absolutely.
I want my money not to be spent frivolously. Well, I wanted to go into something that's going to yield something at the end. And I think that, you know, again, that could be during public session or whatever, but some of the monies is being spent unwisely, and you're not posting these jobs. And if you're going to start moving people around, make sure that it's, everything is legal. They're not trying to straddle too, you know, and we need to develop a grid, because it's plain that people are, you know.
I just want to respond to you about posting jobs.
Okay.
Okay. The entire district, we're very dogmatic about making sure that when there's a job opening, that it's posted and for a period of time. So I don't know, I don't need, I don't think that this is happening. Maybe you haven't gone to certain places. I do know you, but what I'd like for you to do, okay, since you seem very sure, is to memorialize what you're saying to us in writing, and we'll do our research.
And let me tell you.
Okay, and we'll send it to our H R person.
Very good, because I've already, I've already, you know, did the letter, and I would have brought it today, but what I wanted to do is be able to, uh, we have a little, uh, consortium of people that we're working with, and I want to make sure that every, you know, eyes dotted and tears crossed, so that when we, when I present it, it'll be something that's worthy, and that you could go ahead and do what you need to do, but just so that you understand, you know, you know that we're a small community, and that, you know, everyone is always watching, and don't, people are not coming out because they're discouraged now. They feel that, um, and again, that could be during public session, but people are not coming out anymore, because they feel discouraged. They're coming out to the meetings and stuff. I mean, that's why we.
We're going to have a.
Yeah, I know. We just had these things last week. We just had one last week, and I, we had, you know, over thirty five people came.
So I'm talking, you're talking about, I'm talking about a board meeting.
Yeah, I'm talking about board meetings, and we, we had meetings and community, just to see where people are, what we need to discuss here, and that is the biggest thing, if they feel that it's not transparent, and that, um, no one's listening to them, and that it just makes sense to come out, because you guys want to do what you want to do. You know, I'm not of that thinking. I'm going to always come out and tell you exactly what I think, whether you go along with it or not. Doesn't matter to me. I'll push forward, but I think that that shouldn't be the sentiment in the community that's this.
Absolutely not. And you know, and we, what we do, actually for even more transparency, is we make sure that all of our meetings are broadcasted on YouTube, so even if you can't make the, the board meeting, because many of our um, community members can't get to a meeting at seven o'clock, they could be working, or, you know, they have responsibilities with their children, but you can always look at a board meeting, anytime, every board meeting. We have a YouTube channel, and you can look at it.
It's different when you're here. It's a different, like, I, I was so annoyed when you guys had those things.
I appreciate it.
Because I was like, look, I need to see faces. I need to see lips and noses, see how people are really thinking, because that doesn't work.
Some people like it, though, because we do get feedback, and people love it, and people are saying, please continue, please don't stop.
Because they're not ready to get about their bed and come here and look at you guys. And I understand that, that's all right, you know, yeah. I'm getting old, too. I'm like, whoa, I'm going to come up here tonight, but you know what? Sometimes I feel that an issue needs to be based on, and we need to kind of see where we can go with that, so, um, yeah, I, I like that you still have the Zoom. That's good for those who can't get about their bed. But as a community, we need to stop stopping, man. This, this is not looking like this. Especially when you see stuff like this. Come on. You know. But I have other comments, but I know you said I can't do anything but action.
No, no, right.
Okay, so in three minutes, we didn't give you that time. I'll let you go and speak a little bit.
I'll wait to the other.
All right. Thank you for your, and don't forget that I want you to put that in writing. You have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, when you do, just want to work, when you write your letter, if you can attach the agenda, dates and the item that you're specifically talking about, as far as the postings.
Yes. We really don't want the community.
Right. You guys are really hiring, hiring people now, so it's almost like.
But we are at the end of the day.
Yeah, but in knowing that it's posted. That it's posted, right. So if, I literally get to my emails on job posting.
You know what the big, the big word is now in our community?
What?
Nepotism, and I know you heard that. I know for a fact you heard that. Yeah, I know you did, because I can see it on your face right now, but that's okay, but you know, so what I'm saying to you is that we, look, at the end of the day, you all represent us, right? So when you represent us, and somebody brings something to the table, your due diligence is to make sure you go check it out.
That's exactly what you're going to do.
Back to the table, you can say, you know what? I heard that, but this is, because that's how you quell what's going on out there. And then what, then you can say that anytime you.
Yes.
Obama Fund of Work that ever comes, we've always given you a response.
I have, I mean, people say they write a piece, and they don't get a response. I got to be honest. If I write you, I've never not received some kind of response once. I'm, that is not my argument tonight. But we do have open session at the end, right?
Yes, okay.
All right.
Well, listen, we'll leave you for three minutes. Managing me today. Alrighty, so, uh, thank you for your comments. Uh, board, we're going to move to organizational items. Uh, E one, annual school election and budget vote ballot legal notice. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Move by Belinda Monroe, second by Dr. Emily Moore. Are there any questions? May I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm motion carried. E two, engagement agreement, Lewis Bris Boys, Biscar, and Smith, L L P. May I have a motion? So move.
Second.
Move by Belinda Monroe, second by Dr. Emily Moore. Are there any questions? May I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. E three, my brother's keeper, Symposium and Caucus Weekend in Albany, New York, February eighteenth to the twentieth, twenty twenty three. May I have a motion? Sixteen, what did I say? Eighteen? Okay, six, February sixteenth, let me read the whole thing over. E organizational item, E three, my brother's keeper Symposium and Caucus Weekend in Albany, New York, February sixteen through the eighteen, twenty twenty three. May I have a motion? So move.
Second.
Move by Belinda Monroe, second by Dr. Emily Moore. Are there any questions? May I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We're moving to F, business, budget transfer. Number one, facilities. May I have a motion? So move.
Second.
Move by Belinda Monroe, second by Dr. Emily Moore. Are there any questions? May I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm motion passes. F three? E O C. F two, I thought I just did it.
That was F one.
It's two, but. F two, budget transfer, number two, facilities.
So move.
Second.
Move by Belinda Monroe, second by Dr. Emily Moore. Are there any question? May I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm motion carried. F three? E O C Head Start Use of Facilities. May I have a motion? So move.
Thank you.
Move by Belinda Monroe, second by Dr. Emily Moore. Are there any questions? May I have a vote?
Aye.
I'm motion carried. F four? High Use of Facilities. May I have a motion to untable paylists? Item?
So move.
F four? The high Mr. Charles.
It was table. We're untabled.
We're untabled. May I have a motion? Oh, you had the motion. I need a second. Okay. Motion untabled. May I have a vote?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion untabled. Okay. Now, may I have a motion? To approve. F four?
I think this item has been, the request has been.
That request has been. The organization no longer wants to use, like, so. Okay, so this item will be removed from the agenda. Thank you. Great board, we're going to remove, may I have a motion to remove F four? Use of Facilities. So move.
Second.
Move by Belinda Monroe, second by Dr. Emily Moore. May I have a vote?
Aye.
Dr. Moore? I'm motion passes. That has been removed. Okay, F five, Use of Facilities, African American Media Network. May I have a motion to untable this item? So move. Second. I need a second.
Second.
And move by Belinda Monroe, second by Dr. Emily Moore. May I have a vote?
Aye.
Five. No, five. May I have a vote?
We're untabled. This is item we tabled.
Okay.
Now we're untabled.
Five, motion carried. Okay. Four, we're going to revisit Use of Facilities, African American Media Network. May I have most?
Like, make motion table it for further information.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
It's untabled. It's untabled.
It's untabled, okay.
Second. You said second.
Okay. May I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is retabled. Okay, board, we're going to move to Human Resources and Special Development, E.
I would like to make a motion to block vote. G one, G three, G four, G five, G six, G seven, G eight, G nine, G ten, G eleven, G twelve, and G thirteen.
Okay, may I have a second? Move by Belinda Monroe to approve G one, through G thirteen. May I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm motion carried. Moving to H, Curriculum and Instruction. H one, Rehabilitation Institute Contract.
I'd like to make a motion to block vote H one, H two, H three, and H four.
Second.
Okay. No questions? May I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm motion carried. H one, two, three, and four. Okay. Let's move to consent agenda. I, uh, board, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? So move.
Second.
Move by Belinda Monroe, second by Dr. Emily Moore. Approve the consent agenda, item one through item seven. May I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm motion passes. Okay, thank you, board. At this time, we're going to move to our superintendent's report. Um, Yes, Mr. Dell Van Aiken, Assistant Superintendent for Educational Services.
Good evening. Good evening to the Board of Education, to the Cabinet, to the public. On behalf of Dr. Deborah Wertham, who is under the weather, tonight, I bring you the superintendent's report. And we always like to start with our mission statement, to educate the whole child to excel, thereby ensuring achievement for all. Too bad. We always want our students to feel healthy, safe, supported, challenged, and engaged, and we always work to that. And our vision statement, we are Roosevelt, empowered, proficient, and globally ready. Tonight, we have sadness to share with you. Some of you may have heard or saw the email that went out last week. One of our former administrators, Mrs. Josie Mae Young Mitchell, passed away. She was the director of the pre-K center when it was on the Bower Avenue location. And we have a resolution and a moment of silence on her behalf. So I'll read the resolution, and then we will have the moment of silence. "A Resolution in Loving Memory of Josie Mae Young Mitchell. The Roosevelt Union Free School District and Board of Education wish to express our gratitude and respect for Miss Josie Mae Young Mitchell for her impact on the district and the community. Whereas Mrs. Mitchell served diligently and vigorously as Director of the Roosevelt Early Childhood Education Program of the Roosevelt Union Free School District from nineteen sixty-six until nineteen eighty-nine, when she retired from the Bower Avenue location and was a stellar coworker and educator. To Mrs. Mitchell, teaching children was not a job. It was her passion. Whereas Mrs. Mitchell always made it her responsibility to connect with her students and their families. She always felt that it takes a community to raise and to teach a child. She was a strong supporter of early childhood education. Whereas Mrs. Mitchell was a true friend who was always there with willing, helping hands, whether school-related, mentor, or personal. Josie Mitchell was a staunch believer in doing what was right for students. Even when she stood alone in this belief, she never wavered. Hers was a shoulder to lean upon and a heart that understood. Whereas Mrs. Mitchell advised doing your best for the students and encouraging others to take care of themselves. Hence, we will keep her legacy alive by remembering to connect with students and their families and always take care of ourselves. Be it known to all, Mrs. Josie Mitchell's passing, an extraordinary leader in the Roosevelt Union Free School District, has caused a deep border of sadness in the Roosevelt community. Be it resolved, we decree and declare our deepest sympathy to Mrs. Mitchell's family. Be it further resolved that her loss was an inestimable value. We pray that power and strength will reside, and you that love will continue to warm your hearts as you mourn the loss of Mrs. Josie Young Mitchell. Accordingly, as a member, she was a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated and the Divine Nine. Collectively, we will see her in the great getting up morning. Now therefore, the Board of Education resolves as follows. The Roosevelt community mourns with the Mitchell family. A moment of silence is set aside during the public meeting on Tuesday, February seventh, two thousand twenty-three, and a copy of this resolution will be published in our archives as well as presented to the family. Sorrowfully submitted, Dr. Deborah L. Wertham, Superintendent of Schools, Mrs. Rose Gashia, Board of Education President. A moment of silence for Miss Josie Mae Young Mitchell.
Thank you. At this time, I will pass the report over to Mr. Gary Gentles, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance.
Thank you, Ms. Van Aiken. Good afternoon, Board of Education, community members, Dr. Wertham. Um, we have a few presentations for the community tonight. Um, the first presentation will be led by Dr. Elizabeth Tendike, Director of Ransom Funded Programs, and she will go over our current grants and expenditures and so forth.
Good evening. The Board of Education, Executive Cabinet, our Superintendent of Schools, and essential members of the public. My name is Dr. Elizabeth Tendike. I am the Director of Grants and Funded Programs, and with the pleasure of joining this evening to discuss Roosevelt's American Rescue Plan Assort Grants. The American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Release Fund was authorized under the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty-one. This fund provides nearly nine billion to New York State schools to help safely return students to in-person learning and maintain safe operations while meeting the academic, social, emotional, and mental health needs of students resulting from the coronavirus pandemic. The Roosevelt Union Free School District received fifteen million in RFSR funds, divided among the three grants. We received one point four million for after-school programs, one point one million for summer learning, and seven point one million to mitigate student learning loss. In each case, these funds must be expended by September twenty twenty-four, which is a year from this fall. The first grant I will present is the RFSR Summer Programs. The allocation was one million four hundred twenty-eight thousand six hundred dollars, which we distributed accordingly, professional salaries, three hundred thirty-two thousand two hundred fifty dollars, support salaries, one hundred sixty-six thousand two hundred dollars, purchased services, seven hundred twenty thousand dollars, supplies, two hundred ten thousand one hundred fifty dollars. To date, in the next column under expense, you can see that we have expended three hundred seven thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. There is four thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars and eighty-one cents in copper to pay invoices from the summer program last year, which we still anticipate receiving, leaving a balance of one million one hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. The RFSR Summer Program Grant funded Roosevelt's in-house summer learning program, which was held at Centennial Elementary School that summer. It also paid for the Mentoring in Medicine Summer Enrichment Program held at Ulysses Byers Elementary School. In addition, the Summer Learning Grant enabled forty rising fifth-grade students to attend the Rising Stars Program at Malloy University. Finally, the Summer Program Grant enabled the district to purchase Chromebooks to ensure our students have access to learning at all times in the classroom and at home. The RFSR's After-School Grant supports programming, which takes place after the end of the school day. The funds were allocated as follows: Professional salaries, five hundred thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars; Support salaries, two hundred thirty-two thousand two hundred dollars. Support salaries, two hundred thirty-two thousand two hundred dollars. Purchased services, three hundred twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Supplies, three hundred forty-seven thousand four hundred dollars. To date, we have expended four hundred seventy-seven thousand nine hundred seven dollars and ten cents, leaving a balance of nine hundred sixty thousand six hundred ninety-two dollars and ninety cents to be encumbered and expended between now and September twenty twenty-four. Roosevelt uses our best after-school funds to provide a wide variety of after-school programs. At the elementary level, children engage with hooks to the Scholastic Lit Learning League. At the high school, students are working toward professional licensure in barbering. We have offered homework help and tutoring, especially to our high school athletes. Finally, the district has been able to allocate a portion of the after-school funds to purchase additional Chromebooks for our students. And the last RFSER grant I will present this evening is the Learning Loss Grant. The district was awarded over seven point one million to mitigate the impact of the COVID-nineteen pandemic on student academic success. We allocated two hundred twenty-five thousand to professional salaries, one million one hundred fifty-five thousand dollars to support salaries, two million three hundred ninety-seven thousand six hundred seventy-eight dollars to purchase services, two million four hundred twenty-six thousand four hundred twenty-two dollars, four hundred seventy-two dollars to supplies, and nine hundred thirty-eight thousand six hundred fifty dollars to benefits. To date, we have expended one, one million two hundred fourteen thousand four hundred sixty-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. There are six hundred seventy-two thousand seven hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents in encumbrances. And there is a balance of five million two hundred fifty-five thousand five hundred seventy-four dollars and ninety-four cents to be extended between now and September twenty twenty-four. The RFSER Learning Loss Funds will play for the family and community engagement liaisons being awarded at this time. Their liaison's work will transform our relationship with families into a true partnership in which we engage together to ensure our students' success. Learning Loss Funds enable the district to transform the classrooms in the early childhood grades into environments that are truly tailored to the developmental needs of young learners. This grant is funding sustained and ongoing professional development for staff, district-wide, and curriculum, instruction, and school leadership. We have filled our classrooms with brand-new instructional supplies, particularly in English and Math. Finally, as with the RFSER grants I discussed previously, we have been able to utilize these funds to sustain Roosevelt's one-to-one device initiative for our students. It has been a pleasure and honor to present this information through this evening, and I welcome your questions.
I, Dr. Tendike.
Hi, Ms. Monroe.
So you just stated that the Learning Loss Funds, um, the ESSER funds is paying for the family and community engagement?
Liaisons.
The liaison.
The liaison.
Isn't that what the base grant is doing? The Family Community Engagement Grant?
The Family and Community Engagement Grant primarily funds our work with Scholastic, which is the consultant who is guiding us through this initiative.
Mm-hmm.
And then the RFSER Learning Loss Funds will pay for the personnel to do family and community engagement work.
So, when is the learning loss being addressed?
It's being addressed on an ongoing basis.
How? Are there, what are the students? How, where's the data? Like, what? What are the students doing to different?
Well, we've, we've, we're a year and a half into, or two years into.
They just talk about, they just talk about salary, they just talk about, the only thing I saw for children was the early childhood program.
Yeah.
But what else is happening to address?
I'm not, that's what it's for. Comprehensive curriculum initiatives and sustained professional development. And I would invite Ms. McVay.
We need to talk about school programs and things like that. You know, for K, everyone, all elementary students.
You have two, you have different sections of the funding that we allocated from the beginning of the presentation. Dr. Tendike explained what we were using to address the, uh, after-school, and we can also do before-school, because it's much earlier.
That was the, that was the RFA funds?
Yeah, there's different sections.
Right.
We have the after-school portion for learning loss. A good portion of what we put forward, because our school, we were in school improvement.
Mm-hmm.
Both high school, middle school, and that fragile elementary schools. So you're addressing not only the aspects that came about due to COVID, but also too what took place prior to going into COVID. So the district was in a very crowded space with teaching and learning. So I'm looking at it, we had a line and articulated our curriculum in all of our core areas, from pre-K to twelfth grade. That involved a lot of professional practice. So part of that is addressing the, uh, ask on one of the community and our strategic academic plan. There's a whole section in the pillars that talks about professional practice and proficiency. So in order for us to get our students to a place where their outcomes, due to learning loss of being addressed, you have to address the needs of the adults. Does that make sense?
The staff.
Yes.
The teachers.
Yes. So the professional development piece is connected to addressing the needs of our professional practice for teachers and leaders. That also too.
Sounds like we're catching up the adults on their learning loss.
No, because in order for our students to get what they need, that standard base and align as per what the state is expecting, we actually have to make sure you have a strong foundation for why we exist.
I see that part. That's why we approved the professional development. I think when we get learning loss for students, we're thinking that these students are going to have extra classes, extra study time, extra academic interventions. I think when we hear learning loss, yeah, that's what we're thinking. We're thinking that there's going to be.
You have a combination of both. So you have your instructional intervention. That's a part of what we do as educators. That's just what we do. It's a part of our requirement.
Sort of saying like, yeah, you're talking about like AIS during a school day?
Yes. Then you have your external, which is what we're discussing now with the after-school. Part of the ESSER offer requires that you use funds for that. So when we hear about what we're doing with our Lit League, Oakwood, Book Club, we didn't name the programs, but those are all the purchases that.
Oh, we would have, we really would, it would have been good to name the programs, because that's what we wanted to know. And how many students are attending these programs? So how many students are attending Lit? How many students are attending? What is it?
For every student.
Oakwood?
Oakwood. So that would be your funding tutorials, your homework help.
Yeah, that would have been good to see, because what we're looking at is how it directly affects students. We know that we've done a whole lot of spending for professional development. We know that we're doing a strategic plan. But when we're hearing learning loss and where our students are, we want to know how it's going directly to the student and what benefits they're getting.
And then see the data, which this has been done for what, a year instead of a year and a half? This is done on a completion of the second year. We also have the upgrade of all of the materials in the different instructional materials in the core area. And ELA Math, we're starting this year with our History and Sciences to make sure that we meet the standard that we're supposed to, because some of the goals, materials may not have been as updated as we should have had prior to. So we're putting good use, we also do have the responsibility of not only making sure that board and community are clear about what we're spending, but the state also to approve what we're using those funds for. And a good portion of the funds, they have to be spent not necessarily on things, but long-term. So we want to sustain and make sure that our students are getting what they need through their interaction with the staff. So we couldn't ignore what we're doing for professional development, or our teachers, to get them off the car. Not only because with the curriculum, but also through the instruction practices, with the materials that our students are going to have access to. So a nice portion of what we spent was on that. Then we were able to do some of the additional supports, that would be interventions and enrichment activities before, after school, and in the summer. But we had to take care of what we needed for the core. And there was, there was a lot that needed to be done, to get us to a place where we were aligned, articulated, and current with our standards.
So how far are we away from having something for all students, um, after school, for the elementary, elementary, K through five? Well, it's K through six. K through six, so.
Far.
And also, the five million dollars, that was a two-part question, that you said is still encumbered. How are we targeting that? That goal, or are we targeting?
We are. So a good, a good portion of that, the, uh, second phase of what we're doing to bring us current, with teaching and learning, is focused on history and the sciences. That's not going to spend out all five million. So some of that funding will go towards what it is that you're speaking to, the materials, making sure that our young people, that they need labs. And this is elementary school through high school. So we have to shore up all of that material with our sciences. We have to make sure that we're clear about what students are going to be exposed to, whether it's for intervention or enrichment opportunities before and after school. So I know a good, uh, portion of the ask was computer science. How can we get us students more involved in computer sciences? So we're looking at that now, to make sure that.
So we're trying to get computers, computer science labs in each of the elementary schools.
They have labs in elementary school.
I was going to say, I think we're upgrading them.
Not necessarily an upgrade. We want to make sure that the students have an exposure to the computer sciences. So for them to understand what it's like to be able to have an introductory program in core, to know what it's like to, uh, get a taste of engineering and building.
So we're trying to improve that class in instructional day, that will, what do we?
It becomes part of the curriculum.
Curriculum, like how they.
Wanted as part of that, but you also. We had it before or after school, because not everything is going to fit. You have the responsibility of making sure that the core area classes, that you meet that time, that students are supposed to be exposed to standardized instruction as per the state. But then you also too want to give students exposure to the additional pieces that you're asking for. So that would be before and after school programs. Because we know what it's supposed to return to before and after school, with the same thing they're exposed to during the day. So part of the enrichment is to give them something different.
So if I'm a parent, and I want to know how my third grader, what he's, what they're doing, and I want to see the curriculum, what would I do? How would I find that out? Is it available on the, on the website? And does that include that type of information?
Yes, but to a degree that the parents can understand it. So we're looking at upgrading. I know we discussed before what their website piece looked like, and then there was an ask to make it a little more user-friendly for parents. So we've been working on doing that, both and, so we upgrade all of the information that's current. But we also do have a set where there are open-source information that parents can get and take a deeper dive as much as they want, which was the reason for the expansion and additional links. So parents who want the additional information can get it as deep as they would like to. But if they wanted the surface level information, they could.
What's the surface level? Is that, is the outline?
That would be the scouting sequence, of what students are going to be expected to know and be able to do. So the standard, what they're covering over the course of months.
Where do they find that?
We're going to put that up on the curriculum site.
Oh, so it's not available yet?
Yeah, no, we don't put that up yet, because they, the ask was to convince what we had into a more user-friendly, so parents could take a deeper dive. So we're reshaping that entire area to make sure they have access to everything. And there was social studies and science is brought up to standard, let's say that. We'll do that also too for our pre-K eight. Our high school is going to be there, because we started with the high school first and the core areas, you know? So I know the conversation is more around intervention and enrichment, what you're asking now, but we have to shore up the actual curriculum in order firstly, add layers on for intervention and enrichment, because what are you intervening if it's not standard-based for our students? So you actually would need to get that standardized data to know what interventions you're putting in place for young people, and then get a sense of what students are interested in to bring in some enrichment programs that they're really going to gravitate towards.
So classroom teachers aren't using the computer labs during the school day for their science programs? Like, it's not rotating, it's not being, the, the computer labs are only being used after school?
No, they have the option of using their computer labs whenever they like to, but we also have a one-to-one initiative now.
That's what I was going to say, doesn't it? Right?
Now.
So when, so that's what I'm saying. So when we're talking about the computer labs, I'm thinking it's a.
What's that?
What are we doing? You're like, what do we coding? You've got a class, is that, is that something additional?
Asking an additional question.
Hmm, right. An additional question.
One, right, and everybody checks that, and then, so what's the computer lab?
The computer labs that were built out that.
Okay.
You're asking what they're being used for apparently. So the computer labs that were built out with the actual hardware that are in it, those are somewhat outdated, and technology was working to bring those up to speed. So that now when teachers have the options going in, so whether they're going for research, if we're using it for computer-based testing, you have the action of using the actual labs that are there. But because we've kind of moved forward, which is a good thing, in how we're educating our young people, we're now set on one-to-one devices. So many districts have already shifted from actual stationary labs to one-to-one, so that's where we are. So the physical space of the lab is there, the materials are there, and have been somewhat upgraded for students to be able to go into, but the one-to-one initiative, what you want, the students to really have. So that's why we invested so much in it. So you see Chromebooks coming up several times in a lot of the lines that are there. So students can have access.
Else, what's the difference with the computer lab?
That's one thing, that's a different question, like what we want to do with that physical space.
Right, okay.
So I know in the, I'll use the middle school as an example. A good portion of that lab space has now been used when I say we want to bring in opportunities for computer science. You can actually have lab spaces that are set up, where you don't have these fixed hardware pieces. You actually can set up opportunities for students to do robotics. Because it's fashionable, the outlets are there, things are there, so those are the things that we want to look at now.
Very more stiff.
Science.
More stiff, yeah.
So that's what I meant.
So that's where we're going. That's where we're going with those computer areas, we're trying to move those.
That's a part of the plan. The big pieces to be able to have our students have access to real-time one-to-one materials, but also to have the guidance they need and the equipment that goes along with that one-to-one, to be able to do computer science wherever they are. Now they're participating in more of a, um, collaborative type of a group activity where the class, maybe you want to have things set up where students are building out robots and different types of mechanical equipment for a variety of purposes. The labs will be the ideal space, because they're already there. When an architect built a building, they built it out, put the ports in and everything for the purpose of computers. So we're using those spaces. They won't go to waste. That's what I said, that's a different question. So we're looking at computer science, and if the question is about the labs, we'd have to figure out how to fashion that out. But right now, the focus is on making sure we have a standard-based, challenging, quality curriculum in all four, four, uh, subject areas that children can build upon as they move through the continuum in the district. That was part of the review, what state is looking at, where we are, given our status of being TSI, CSI at the middle school.
Right.
TSI's in district, you want to make sure that your curriculum is current, and that your instructional practice is of quality. So when the funds came about to address learning loss, that's where you start. So you know that you have those gaps there, you shore up those areas, and then you start to build on it with some of the additional pieces. So that's what we're doing. So that thigh that's there, it's not just sitting. There's a plan for a good portion of that. And then while assisting in the sciences.
I think I have another question for Dr. Tendike. Are you going after any additional grants? Or any competitive grants?
All of us. Specifically, uh, for student, uh, mental health, special emotional support, uh, there is interest in exploring funding for improvement to our athletic facilities. Uh, kindergarten transition is on the table right now. I always maintain awareness of new opportunities and bring them to the attention of the Superintendent and Executive Cabinet for discussion.
Because, you know, one of the concerns of the board is how much we spend, have to spend, send our kids to charter schools, and if we provided services here, the time, the after-school program, the early, all of that stuff, then they would come back. They would be here, and that's what we want to do. That's what, you know, we have to really look at how we're going to start marketing the public school system and making sure that we're targeting what our kids need right now in the district. All kids, you know, if the parents, you know, are sitting in there, the charter school is not doing anything better than what we're doing. We all know that. They can't. They don't have what we have.
Hmm.
So why are they not here? We need to address that, and we need to bring those kids back, and we need to stop these people from putting charter schools in our district by providing better services for our children. So whatever's left that is five million dollars, or whatever money that you can get and that we are using, we need to look and make it sure it's infused directly into our children, so that the parents want to bring them back. So, and I love the professional, we got to put people in front of our kids who are developed, who understand technology and what they need, but we also have to make sure that, you know, a nice amount of that is infused directly into these children, to make sure that when they leave here, that they're ready.
Yeah, we want to make them.
Yeah, we do. You know, I see them every day, and, and, and it breaks my heart to see them not here or somewhere else, and they're not getting any better, even in private school. So, um, thank you. I don't know if there's any more questions.
Just today, have you, have we accumulated any of these competitive grants, or we?
We just secured five hundred twenty-five thousand threshold funding that was approved, um, and signed into law just before Christmas by President Biden.
Okay.
Will have access to those funds in September. We have some planning to do now, and we have to apprise federal governments by May fifteenth, how we plan to extend the funds. And then we'll actually receive the funds and be able to implement programming this fall.
Excellent. What's that, what's that for? What, what's that grant for?
It's a community, community funding initiative.
So was it competitive?
It was absolutely competitive. I worked through the Office of Representative Kathleen Rice. Uh, she's no longer in the House of Representatives, so management of the funds has been taken over by Senator Schumer's office.
Okay.
It was, uh, highly competitive. It took about ten months of work with Congresswoman Rice's office to secure those funds for the Roosevelt School District. And the intent of the grant is specifically to shore up former health and tutoring for. And the intent of the grant is specifically to shore up former health and tutoring for students so they receive direct support and intervention for academics itself.
Yes, okay, very nice. What was it again, community funding initiative?
Community funding initiative, I can send you some information.
I'm gonna like that, yes.
I will.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ten Dyke.
Thank you. I think that's it, you don't have any questions.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Ten Dyke, thank you, Ms. McVeigh. Thank you, Board President, shared by President Moreau. Um, in addition to Dr. Ten Dyke's presentation, we'll also give our preliminary presentation as far as budgeting for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, tonight I'll discuss a little bit about revenue and the revenue outlook. Um, projection wise, um, projection wise, we are looking at receiving about a hundred and twelve million, five hundred and seventeen thousand, six dollars in state aid, a tax levy, twenty-four million, thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and nineteen. Um, pilots, payments and load taxes, a hundred and twenty thousand miscellaneous revenue, four hundred and fifteen thousand. Our budget to budget increase is eleven point two five percent, tax levy is one point five percent currently projected. Uh, as I said before, these numbers are projected. Uh, excellent. So if we look at the budget to budget, growth, um, property taxes, we're looking at three hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars um increase, which is one point five percent. Uh, payments and load taxes decrease about fifteen thousand dollars based on what we've been collecting. Um, state aid is increasing thirteen, thirteen million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty, which is a fifteen point five percent increase. We still maintain our A, A I G grant, which is twelve million dollars. And we're not using any fund balance or any respective reserves. And we have other, other revenues is four hundred and fifteen thousand, no. So I know this slide is a little smaller, but I just wanted to give the community and the board just an overview of how our state aid is calculated and how we came up with the hundred, one hundred million. Um, when you look at foundation aid, the state, the state run first came out, came out last week. Uh, that's the first run, which is the executive run. So the governor came out with her budget. Um, usually that budget gets voted on and the legislative budget comes out in April, and that's when we'll find the real numbers. So if you take a picture, for instance, at last year's budget, the foundation aid last year, when the, when the governor came out with her budget was fifty-nine million, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. When it was voted on from the, by the legislature, it was, it came back at fifty-eight million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty-two dollars, which was a reduction of one million, one hundred and twelve thousand, five fifty-eight. Now, we predicted this year that we would receive thirteen million dollars in state aid. Uh, right now, the state is showing that we're gonna receive thirteen point eight million dollars, but this is just the governor's budget. So if we take the same picture as last year from the governor's run to the legislative run and see the reduction with, we have to reduce the budget by the same amount until April till we really solidify when legislation actually comes out with their budget. So right now, this number is projected based on when legislative budget comes out. And at the same time, another reduction that we usually remove from the budget is the Yuki K grant, because that's, that, that money's coming as a grant, that's not state aid per se. That money is based on students in the classroom. Next slide, so from a, a quick expense look. Next year charter schools will probably be around eleven million, five hundred and thirty-five thousand, nine thirty-four. That's basically looking at six hundred and twelve students at a per pupil cost of eighteen thousand, five fifty. This year currently, the per pupil cost is eighteen thousand, five seventy-two. And based on the last three years and the increases, we projected that it's gonna go to eighteen, eighteen thousand, five fifty. Now, the thing with charter schools is the numbers usually comes out after the budget vote. So if for some reason the projection jumps by two percent instead of one percent, then we have to make up for that cost. But there's nothing that we can do because the state releases their number after budget vote. Um, other expenses that we know we, that's gonna remain the same this year, T R S was the same as last year, ten point five percent. Um, E R S is gonna be eighteen percent and health insurance is increasing, so it's about a fifteen percent increase next year. And that's what I have is for the revenue budget. The next budget presentation, I'll kinda dig into the expenses to show what the district will be expended in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Okay.
Thanks, any question?
I only see one thing, I was packed with the government. I've seen everything else. Right, it is. I'm hoping that you do, you know, really have some evenings that you can sit down and go through the budget because, you know, um, I think you need to really understand. I mean, I understand because I've been through it so many times, but they need to understand.
This is not really the, the entirely, they're going to be that budget presentations is gonna really dig, dig in deep so that, you know, the community can understand. So they're coming, these dates are gonna put out. You have the dates already, so my thing.
I think the first budget meeting that we talk about expenses is the next one.
Okay, the next budget, the next board meeting?
The next board.
Oh, it's the next watching budget meeting. Okay, so the next board meeting. Okay, so there'll be some deep dive and then, and then ask your questions that, during a question and answer. So questions from the board?
Oh, okay. So, um, this week is school counselors week and we do have a quick video that we'd like to share to highlight. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Van Iken. For the report and, um, Mr. Gentles and and the cabinet, if anyone works together as teams, thank you for everything. Okay, and at this time, we are going to move to, uh, public comment, section K, questions from the public. You can use your comment bars and your comments, you're limited to three minutes. I'm gonna protect this, thank you. I know you have wonderful comments.
Just gonna ask just two questions, then I'll do the rest in writing.
You'll do the rest, when?
In writing.
Oh, great, yeah, I like that, thank you.
That way I have a. I've listened to the information about the grants. It's just to really mind, mind minding the money that we've gotten. It just seems like so much of it is going to professional development and professional services. Um, with the money that we have received in grants, it should be no child here who is not progressing well in school. I do have some questions on that, but again, I'm gonna put that in writing. Um, because it's, well, the one thing I don't understand was the Chromebooks, I noticed we had. So are we saying every student has a Chromebook?
Every student has a device. Down at breaking them though.
Yeah, the young, the younger grades have it.
Yeah, they have a device.
So we, so when we keep, when I see them on every line, are we buying new ones? If everybody has one now, are we buying more?
Yes, we're replenishing, yeah.
You keep buying more and more.
We have to, we have to.
Okay, and then the other thing that I was concerned about, I listened to, um, the programming. I mean, there's nothing really for, for the kids across the board. I mean, I know we're saying we're gonna do STEM, I mean, but STEM nowadays is just not, it's coding. It is a lot, and I don't, with the money that we, that we're receiving, and we should have some state of the art stuff going on here, and I don't see that at all. But again, um, I think I just need time to go through. I saw the presentations, I wanna look at the numbers, see what you guys have before I start. Um, kinda knocking everybody over the head about that.
And also look at some of the programs that I think Ms. Van.
I've seen some of this stuff, I just.
Mentioned and.
Um, yeah, it doesn't seem really.
And it needs to target them with them.
And it's true, target a lot of their kids. And I think if you're gonna do after school and you wanna compete with the charter school, we gotta open our schools up and you gotta have some food for the kids, I mean, real food, not these little pretzels and a, and a piece of drink, you know, they need food. And it needs someone that's, that's working with them so that when they go home, you know, I know it's, it's terrible to say that you're taking a lot of the responsibility off of parents, but we need to hold up this stuff before they leave, eat before they leave and then go home. Sometimes the last meal they get is the only thing they get here in the school. I'm concerned about the family, community engagement liaisons. And I, I think that's something I've, I've said before. What I don't get about that, and I know this is a grant, and I heard Ms. McVeigh say for the long term. Okay, so when these grants are over, we still gotta pay.
Absolutely.
Okay, and what I don't like about this, and I, and I feel, I feel that, you know, something about this is not right. First and foremost, when we first started out with the community liaison, it was one position, one person, and it, this is a one square mile, okay? If you can't handle that position, one person, something's not right right there. That's number one. We paid the person fifty thousand dollars a year, barely ever had a raise, and they worked the whole community. Now we're talking about, we have one person in a position, we're putting one in each building at forty thousand dollars a person. That's like a glorified P T A, and you know how I feel about that P T A because, you know, I know Dr. Wortham is, is listening, but it was Dr. Wortham who decided we didn't need P T As here anymore in this community, we don't need it one, okay? And that, that was a bad idea, bad thing, I don't care who agrees and don't.
That's not true.
Wait a second.
But that's not true, Amy.
And I have my three, I have my three minutes, and whether she disagree or you disagree, I have my three minutes. We talk about it later, let me get my, my, my thoughts out. I was there, I fought with that, sorry, I know that to be, I don't know anybody on that, that was a hundred percent. I remember the meeting that we went to, okay? We destroyed the P T As here in Roosevelt and Dr. Wortham helped that. Now, past that, we don't, I don't understand why we need a community liaison person in every building. And if you are gonna do that, what are the qualifications? Are they living here in this community? I mean, a one square mile, four people? That's a little over the top. Even if you said that the person needed to have some support, and you put one person, one for the high school and then one for elementary, I can even go with that. But four people in this small community is ridiculous. And after this is all done, someone's gonna have to pay when this grant is not in, in place anymore. And to offer people, um, you know, ten unit, I don't know what the whole parameters are, but I'm getting ready to investigate because the community is really starting to yell about that because the one person that had that, had that job for years and it had, and you already knew.
Who, what you talking about?
The community liaison, okay? Now to raise that. And then I guess what bothers me is that if you had a P T A functioning in each building, it would be no need for community liaison. And then forty thousand dollars a person?
This is not a community like that, it's, it's called, uh, community engagement.
I know.
It's also part of attendance.
Yeah, we put the little word on it, you know, the change.
It's also part of a bigger department, a business department. So, um, we can get, I want you to put, that's why I.
I'm definitely.
Put that in writing so I can share with you what those.
And I am, I'm disappointed that, you know, the way the posting went with that as well, so I'll definitely talk about that. Um, the other thing is, um, when we talking about, you know, pushing and A I S, we got to this point with, 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 during COVID because our staff and, and people running this during, were lazy. We didn't push in, we didn't have A I S, you said A I S, but you wasn't doing any A I S. I had A I S on that Zoom. My nephew was this, when I watched him every day, as a matter of fact, one day I actually put my head in and said, hey, are you there?
No.
Okay, so that never worked.
Happened.
Okay, that did happen. And the teacher can tell you, she can tell you, she was like, oh, hi, Mr. Trump. Okay, it happened. But again, I'll put that in writing. And my last thought is I have a, a neighbor that's been complaining about her son. And he's, I have the video, so I don't have to worry about anybody saying this is not true. I have the video, I have four videos of him being jumped in the school. And at the point now, I mean, I think he has issues anyway, but he's now anxiety. He just wanna come back to his school. He doesn't, then the principal and everybody needs to get together and decide what the plan is gonna be. Because now he's been sitting home over two months afraid to come back to this school, and that's not the way it's supposed to happen. Somebody should have jumped in. She had an appointment with the principal a couple days ago, I guess he's sick. He's supposed to do a Zoom meeting and he didn't even attend a Zoom meeting. I have everything, I made sure she C C'd me on everything so that I'm not just speaking off the top of my head. I'm definitely speaking from, um, being in the seat. And that's to say, he should not have to deal with that here. And that, that video of him being jumped, for me, if it was my kid, you know, that would, I can't imagine that. Um, but that's something you guys need to really handle because this kid has been out of school over two months. And he has not been, and he's not only that, he is under an I E P. So some, you know, we have to dig to the bottom of that. Lastly, um, I wanted to ask you, when you talk about, um, the after school and before school and programming, you say program before school, I mean, what time would that be? You say before school programming, what are we gonna say? Kids are coming in at seven o'clock, the program, is that what we're looking at?
Seven, seven.
Seven, seven, seven A M. Five-year-old coming in at seven o'clock, they're like, but are we really, are we?
There are. That's one of the, the, the things that the charter school and, and schools outside of the board, right? So we're not saying that has to be for every, not, no, we didn't say programming, grams.
Because in the morning when they come in, no, in the charter school, Sunday in the morning, when they come in the morning, it's just for breakfast, affirmation, then they're ready to go. So it's no programming, but they open the school earlier and they provide them with nutritious meal.
Right.
You know, so when I, that's why I'm asking, so what, what do we say?
Program.
Well, what I'm saying to you.
Whatever it is that our.
Consultants, right, someone wanna speak to the programs?
Yeah, what are we gonna, when you say, or what happens?
Any information on, on what that would look like here? Anyone from the cabinet?
That's part of what we wanna make sure that we're looking into. So we already have an after, but we have had a number of parents who have requested before. Yeah, so I hear what it is you're just saying, but that's kind of from parent replies, they want before, one after, and then one Saturday. So we're taking care of the after, but now we're gonna look into what we can do to meet the need or the request for before and Saturday.
Yeah, I like the program.
But she was saying.
Be, it'll be.
That's why I'm asking.
And stuff like that exercise.
And I'm just always. Well, and I guess the other last question I'm gonna add, so when we spend up this, this money to here, and this is all done, what then? Because this is only for twenty twenty-four.
Yeah.
So our long range, are, are we now as community residents, taxes gonna keep going up because we gotta need the demand of these new programs that we're bringing on board? Or, um, are we gonna have other grants that are gonna support it? Because once this is done, and this is to twenty twenty-four, are we saying that the community engagement liaisons are gonna be here to twenty twenty-four? And then we're done? I mean, because they they, I mean, in this position, if this business, I mean, are we talking benefits for them? I mean, when we look at this picture, I mean, we're already paying one person. Now we're gonna add four people on. And is this gonna be past twenty twenty four? Because then we're looking at, I mean, we got five million right here.
I want you to put those questions in writing, and we will get back to you with that.
You give me that name as well before you leave.
Yeah, just yes. And also, Ms., um, Dr. Moore wants to make a statement.
Um, you know, the more involvement at the school from morning to evening will will help save our children. But it's not that.
You say it's not the chess program.
The chess program is a good example of it, but I know we had one program. And the kids would bring their younger brothers and sisters in the gym and we would do activities. But Mr. The chess program, Mr. Evans came, they came early and left. Ten years in a row, Roosevelt was the top chess, um, the Roosevelt School District won the chess championship.
That's an example of what what I'm.
And the kids coming out with extra help. So. It's been my expense in the school district. Check with different.
Really good. Thank you, Dr. Moore.
That's all I. Well, it's for the, I mean, I know you've come to the meetings, you and Dr. Moore. Did you receive the level up? All the other schools have sent their kids.
Oh, yes, 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 we did. We did. Thank you. Okay, yes, the level up. Okay, so if there are no other, I wanna ask Dr. Wortham.
What about that?
Dr. Wortham? Is there anything that you'd like to say? Dr. Wortham is feeling really under the weather and so.
I'd like to say something like that.
Okay.
Um, do you all have any plans for the little Harry Daniel School?
It's a great question. Great questions. And the answer is yes. And we're going to have some community meetings to discuss what we talked about, we, um, orange, excuse me, yeah, what direction that we, some of the direction, and we want some input from our community. We've already had, um, people there to deal with the asbestos situation. We have the architects giving us proposals. We're talking about how many classrooms, what type of programming we could have there. So, um, we're right at the cusp of having our community engagement meetings so that we can discuss the direction. Um, a big, a big, uh, question for us, uh, that we keep kicking around. The the room is the money. How much, you know, where are we gonna get the money, you know, floating a bond? Whether any of it's debatable, depending on what we put in, you know, what programming we put in the building. So those are some of the discussions that we've been having. So we're moving forward vigorously with our Harry Daniels conversation because I'm really tired of looking at it. It's a shame. So. Just wait. Oh. But put all your questions in writing and and we will get back to you regarding posting. Okay, so I'm going to get ready to close out the meeting, but I did say Happy Black History Month to everyone. Each year, um, I try to think about something to say that's important that is, um, I think heartfelt about Black History Month. You know, we all hear about the same things over and over again. But I wanted to have something that addressed some of the things that maybe we're not talking about and seeing. And each year, an American president endorses a specific theme for Black History Month. And, uh, this year, um, the theme is Black Resistance, which recognizes the historic and ongoing oppression of Black Americans in all forms. Previous Black History Month themes include Black health and wellness, African Americans and the vote, the crisis in Black education, the Black family, representation, identity, and diversity are all still very current. Every year, as a board member, we consider, as board members, as the whole board, because I'm speaking for the board, we consider the growth and celebration of our communities, our community's diversity, and look to embrace our cultural differences and empowering ways for all people. Though Black History Month has been celebrated for many years, the contribution of those Black people with disabilities are really recognized or celebrated. Yet five point six million Black Americans live with disability, with or with a disability. Meanwhile, it's not widely known or even mentioned that Harriet Tubman experienced epilepsy or that Muhammad Ali had dyslexia. Failure to mention or recognize the disabilities of these Black achievers and others contributes to the erasure of and works against equity and inclusivity. Black History Month may have originated in the United States, but it's important to remember that it's inclusive in of other cultures as well. One in ten Black people in the United States are immigrants. And they contribute to the rich tapestry of American growth and history. For example, Kwame Tour was a prominent political activist and organizer in the civil rights movement, who was born in Trinidad and raised in the United States. Meanwhile, Colin Powell, former U.S. Secretary of State, was the son of a Jamaican immigrant. Shirley Chisholm was the only Congresswoman of Guyanese descent in American history, as well as the first Black woman elected to United States Congress, and she may have a president. So that's just to name a few. As we continue to learn and educate in this district from an equity lens, let's maintain the movement of cultural inclusivity of all people. Because we are, and Black History is American. Thank you. So our next board meeting will be Tuesday. Did I forget any? Okay, so the board is asking me to address the question about PTA. You have two PTA leaders, and you start with me at the PTA.
That was impressive.
You, right, we start together, PTA. And the situation that happened with the PTA was not, Dr. Wortham came in as the PTA was transitioning into one PTA. That's exactly what happened. And the reason for that was because some of the schools was losing their five oh one C three. The tax laws had changed. Some of the schools had not paid, I'm not gonna say which school, their membership fees. And so we were contacted by the state saying that someone had asked for a, um, special needs, um, PTA, you know, septum. They, when they asked that, they said, we have to deny it because all of your schools are not in good standing. And I said, really? Is that, is that, which schools are that? And they told us, and they told us how much it would cost to restore the PTA back in good order. She said, but there's another option. You could do a district wide PTA, which would include every school. It would be umbrella. You would have to dissolve all the all the ones in good standing. And for me, that was a big concern because the PTA that I was president over, that we were president over was in good standing.
That was it, but this is not.
Okay, yeah, that is true. I just wanted to.
I was wondering, you know, I was there, so you you're not being truthful, and that's okay. I understand. I understand. She's a superintendent and she doesn't want that on her.
I I just know.
But I just. You know that that is not true, okay?
And you know what? I appreciate, and you said it, but I'm just telling you because I was president. This, she was the president.
The superintendent don't have the power to.
No.
You're right, but she came in, and I remember the the meeting. She came in and she sold. You're right. She didn't have the power. The problem is, everybody fell in line and they said, okay, because you know, Rose, you wanted a one, okay? You wanted that one anyway. I was always the one to say, no, leave those leave those schools set up the way, but you wanted one.
No.
And when she came, when she came, when Dr. Wortham came with this idea, you.
And Dr. Wortham did not even come with an idea.
That's not true. And I even had, you know, that's not true.
Have the documentation. Then I can.
I don't like the way that you guys even, and you knew, you you got, we shouldn't even discuss this now because it is a, it is a sore thumb. Because that is not true what you're saying. And Dr. Wortham, whether she wants to agree with it or not, and whether you want to, and whether Ms. Ms. Moore, we all the, we all know, so we can leave it like that? And you could try to make it seem like, because I know you're sitting there and you got the force, but we, I know for a fact, and I can bring twenty people here that will go along and say, you know for a fact that it had nothing to do with what you're saying right now. You wanted one.
For me to address a question. One, two, three.
You made a statement, we made a statement that it was that Dr. Wortham, and I'm just making it a she did does not stand by that. So today I met this earth. She did.
Well, you're giving her more power than she really actually. Okay, and you know what? Okay, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. If everybody, can I have everyone? No, 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 wait, the meeting, I'm sorry. I don't mean to be rude, Dr. Wortham, but let, I mean, Dr. Moore, let me close out the meeting.
Okay.
And then you can see, okay? Dr. Dr. Moore, please, I wanna close out the meeting and I apologize if I sound rude.
No, it's all right.
Thank you. Okay, our next board meeting. Justin Cosley, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. It will be an action meeting, public session in person at seven AM Roosevelt High School. Okay, at this time, I'm gonna ask the board for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So.
Second. Moved by Belinda Monroe, second by Dr. Emily Moore. May I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Your time is down now. Yeah. Have a good night, everyone.